My name is Jim Brown. I am president of the Camden chapter of Rutgers AAP F T. I'm here to sort of MC and run the Q and A and basically get out of the way and let Howard do his thing. But there's a couple other folks, I think, who are going to introduce themselves first before I introduce Howard and he starts his presentation. Ryan, you wanna, you wanna jump in here?
Sure. My name is Ryan Noweselski. I'm co-president of Health Professionals and Allied Employees Local 5094. We represent staff at Rutgers University, professional staff, select mental health, IT, administrative staff at the various legacy UMDNJ schools and some of legacy Rutgers at this point. And yeah, we're just here to learn about how the university is prioritizing stuff other than us and how they have the money. And you know, it's time that we get our fair share of it, really.
Thank you. And Brian Sax.
Sure. Thanks, Jim. I'm Brian Sax. Everybody good to be here. I'm the vice president of the PTLFC. That's the Rutgers adjuncts union. There are in a given semester nearly 2,000 PTLS that teach at Rutgers. The number used to be higher, actually, before the pandemic. And we're in the contract campaign like Ryan is and like full-time faculty grad unit is and like the medical faculty are. And we've made three primary demands of the university, which they've been to this point completely unresponsive. We're demanding equal pay for equal work to keep parity with our NTT colleagues. We're demanding job security. You may know that PTL is only work term to term, even if they've been here like Amy and I on this call and maybe some others for a long time, 15 years or more. And we're also demanding healthcare coverage that put us on par with full-time faculty and grad workers. And again, as I said, the administration has so far been completely unresponsive. And as we'll hear from Howard, it's not because they don't have the money. It's because they don't have the right priorities.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you. And as just to sort of continue more of the same, you know, as a faculty member in Camden, we're often told about about the lack of resources or or that, you know, we're constantly being told that we're asking for sort of ridiculous things. And I'm hoping to hear from Howard today about how with some ammo for those responses, because as Brian mentioned, we know we know the resources that that Rutgers has. So I want to, I do want to hand things over to Howard now and just sort of have him jump right in and give us his presentation. And I know that he's also planning to save some time at the end for Q and A. And during that, I'll help sort of manage who's who's asking questions and ask you to raise your hand for those. Sorry, I lost my screen here. Howard is professor of accounting at Eastern Michigan. He's given these presentations for us before. They're always extremely informative. He does these sorts of deep dives into the books for us to show us kind of what what's hidden in there. And I'm going to hand things over to Howard now.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that. And great to be back at Rutgers. Love you guys, as you know, and been coming a long time. And always want to be there and hopefully in the near future. I will be there, as you know, the native New Yorker. So love being in all over to all the campuses, I've been to all of them. And there's a lot here. I certainly hearing from the from the union presidents about what you guys are looking for. We'll try to stress those things in the presentation. And in terms of the presentation, I'm going to keep my chat open. So if you guys have something that you you're burning to ask about, you can let me know. Plus, I know you guys talk to each other a lot during the chat and it helps for me to see what you guys talking about, because maybe, you know, I could steer the discussion in that direction. So don't be afraid to use the chat or even call out if you if you have to, but I'll get streamlined this a little more and make sure we have time at the end for questions. So let's start. This is just a roadmap of where we're going. And I'm really going to start out. I try to make the presentation so that really early on I address the ammo question from a lot of you. You guys use that phrase. Several of you use that phrase. What can we do to convince, you know, to combat the idea that there's no resources and there's no money to do the things that we think they should be doing. So let's just get right into it. So overall conclusions on page three. And again, you guys, you know, this is being recorded. Yes, it is. Which is fine, of course. And you guys do with it you like. And the slides are there for you guys to use as you like. So and then afterwards, the other thing I'll say is and last time over the weekend, a couple of you guys sent me emails and asked me some questions. That is perfectly fine. And I hopefully will respond as quickly as humanly possible. So if you have any questions after we're done here at 6:30, you could certainly like, what did you mean by that on that slide? You know, something like that. I mean, I'll certainly address any of it. So, okay, so first Rutgers is in very solid financial condition. Reserves and cash flows are there. There's not that much debt. And the state support's getting better. The bond rating is really good for a big public place in the state of New Jersey. Considering the fiscal condition of the state over the last decade, which is getting better, but still not as strong as other states in the region and nationally. So it's very solid to have for the flagship to have such a good bond rating. Enrollment generally has been solid, though there's been a slight decline for last, the past fiscal year. And still, it's a huge place, 70,000 students, and it's definitely a strength. The Romans definitely a strength. There was a decline in auxiliary revenue. It wasn't all because of athletics. A lot of it was in housing and dining related to the pandemic. But as we'll see, the the amount of COVID support dwarfed whatever they lost in this revenue source. And the one that really I think I want to highlight toward the end of the presentation is the increase in dollars paid to administrators versus all other staff. On all, we're going to go campus by campus and we'll see it all these places. The change in, you know, as COVID affected things. What happened was we saw either a flat or increase or slight decrease in the number of administrators, but large decreases in other employee groups over the time. And then, of course, we'll talk about sports. You guys can hear me talking about my youth sports man. But what Rutgers has done and is going to do in athletics is just not working, has not worked and will not work in my estimation. And we'll talk about why. So the best evidence. We're going to show you that here's on page five. This is a picture, so to speak, kind of a graph picture table of the nine variables that Moody's uses to grade assess, give assign whatever word verb you want to use a bond rating to Rutgers. And the bond rating for Rutgers right now is where my cursor is. It's AA three. So it's kind of over here. And you could see there's six empirical variables and three kind of, who knows what they are. Brand strategic positioning, operating environment, financial policy and strategies, hard to know what goes into those variables. It gets Moody's actually a lot of flexibility in assigning ratings. But the six empirical variables, we know exactly what they are. And the ones that Rutgers does really well on are size in terms of revenue. Size in terms of cash and investments, and then a measure of reserves, the level of cash and investments compared to operating expenses. The operating performance, so it doesn't look just over here in the very good, not excellent, excellent, super excellent category. I wouldn't call this bad at all. EBITDA, just and I have to type it out because it's something that's not easy easily understood is earnings before interest, depreciation and amortization, and truly a measure of cash. That's what it's trying to, it's trying to get at cashless. Rutgers Moody's has gone through four iterations of what you see on the screen. And this is the one that's being used now as we speak. And they've gone through various different metrics of or proxies, if I want to use that word for cash flows. And this is where we are. This is basically like a profit margin. And this is a pretty strong. This means they're taking in more cash than they're spending, as we're going to show you. In terms of debt, it's not a high level of debt. There's a decent amount, but not a huge amount. And they're covering the debt fairly well. So overall solid, not triple A like Michigan or or AA one like Ohio State, but pretty close. But pretty close. So this is a distribution on page six of all the bond ratings, public and private universities. So it includes everything. And you could see Rutgers is here. And there are a couple of universities here and a lot more too. It's right or lower have lower ratings. So first on the revenue, money coming in. So I went back to the reason you guys know as well as I how the structure, I heard legacy, I heard someone, one of the president use the word legacy, I think. And that's really how the structure, how the structure of records changed so much pre 2014. I was certainly with you guys way, you know, back in late 09. But the structure changed. So that's why I certainly have data going all the way back before this, all the way to 05, but to compare is not really appropriate until, you know, 14 is the appropriate place to start comparing records over time. And we see, I have two bars here, two lines here, one, the revenues, including medical, the hospital and patient services, and one without it. And in both cases, you could see the trend is generally up, which of course is good. And you could see how the biggest increase, the biggest increase year to year was in 20 to 21. And we'll see, yes, some of that was federal money, but some of it was other things as well. As we'll look at. So, and this is just comparing the main revenues over time. There was a decline, a little decline in tuition revenue. You see the hospital revenue, the brownish RNG bar here almost doubling from 500 million to almost a billion dollars tuition revenue over a billion dollars from 800 million in 2014. The drop in auxiliary revenue you see here is more than made up for by the code relief money, which will which we'll get into. And the state appropriation kind of flattish, even down a little bit over this eight-year period. So let's go here. I'll spend just a little time here on cash flows. I just want to show you where the one of the big things in conclusion, I'm going to give to you on the next two slides is they take in more money than they spend. They're generating positive operating cash flows. And so what I have in the top half of this table, the cash received from tuition, research grants, the hospital, auxiliaries, housing, dining, student union, bookstore, parking, athletics, other, whatever other is the state appropriation code relief funds, which we see went from nothing, obviously, in 19 and then increased in 20 and 21. Contributions, people giving money, not to the foundation, just to Rutgers and some financial aid, most of this mostly Pell Grants, which is really like income, investment income. So they took in, you could see $3 billion now, almost 3.8 billion dollars. And the spending, the number one spending item is on people, payments to employees, salaries and benefits, but not everything. And we'll certainly, you could see a decline in what was spent on people from 20 to 21 and payments to stuff a decline also. Payments for grants and aid to students, interest paid and total cash outflows. The bottom level, the bottom green. So they took in 3.7 billion. They spend 3.4 billion 276 million dollars in operating cash flows that were positive. We're going back eight years, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight years. Not in a single year did Rutgers have negative operating cash flows. And that's what the graph on the next page tells you. So ammo, big ammo. Number one is this slide right here. And this slide, by the way, is just the last row of this graph. And it just shows the net operating cash is all cash in from everything versus all the cash out. And you can see on an operating basis, how well they're doing. 21 was very good year was not as good as 19 and 16, but still pretty good, much better than 2018 and 17. But overall, to see eight years in a row of positive cash flows is very impressive. And one of the main reasons to conclude that Rutgers is in strong position. The other is on the reserves. Now, these two kind of go hand in hand. Reserves, it's not necessarily a pot of cash. It means there's access to, it reflects access to resources that they can tap into if needed. The reason why the reserves are generally growing is because they're generating more cash. Now, there are a lot of needs. They use some of these reserves, capital needs and other things. But still, the dark green, the restricted expendable are reserves that are spoken for mostly to pay off debt, debt service and specific student scholarships. They can't be spent for salaries. That doesn't mean they're not relevant. It is so nice to have some of your definitive, no, you definitely have to spend it needs covered, which is what the dark green is. The dark green is covering major expenditures such as debt service and future scholarships. The line green are unrestricted and the administration may use phrases like, oh, it's tied up in the colleges, it's tied up in the department, or it's in New Brunswick, it can't be spent in Camden, or it's in Newark and it can't be spent in New Brunswick or something. And those walls are all self-imposed. Those restrictions are all self-imposed. And generally, the line green, you could see the line green at 800 million dollars. That's what this is. 800 plus million dollars of unrestricted reserves is the biggest it's been basically since F, which is nice. And the total reserves of 1.5 billion B with a B, not M, B is also so these, these two slides together, 11 and 12, really demonstrate that the cash flows are there. And chat, that's funny. The cash flows are there and the reserves are there. That's the best ammunition that difference. And that is what feeds into the bond rating, which we'll see in a second. So some details on the financial statements. This is the balance sheet over time. That's over 7.3 B with a B billion dollars of assets. The net assets are the difference between the assets and the liabilities. Not all this is interest-bearing debt, but there's about 3.4 billion dollars of debt. So we're not saying that of this is always is all reserves, but 800 million is pretty good for the last year. The balance sheet doesn't really tell us much. I'm not going to get into the pension adjustments and all the detail here. It's there for you to see. I'm just gonna I will just leave it for now. But those reserves are definitely there of 800 million. And this tells you where the assets are. And someone asked last time about the capitalist, you could see the capitalists are buildings. And from 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, we really saw an increase in buildings from $3 billion to almost $4 billion, but it's kind of leveled off. That means leveling off means not like they stopped building, but the new building is equated with the decline in value of the old stuff. So that's what tells me it's kind of leveled off a little over the last three years from 19 to 22. This is nice. This is not just the stock market doing well in 21, which of course it did, but more generation of cash flows. So we could see big increase in cash and investments over two and a half billion dollars. This this, this black bar of over two and a half billion dollars. Try and understand. Yeah, these slides are yours to have. You guys have them and keep them. But this two and a half billion dollars, I'm sorry to go backwards, but I'm going back. I'm sorry, sorry, sorry. Just bear with me a second. This guy here. That's what that is. That's why it's a strength, more than two and a half billion dollars of cash and investments. That's just a lot of money. I'm not saying it's all free to be spent whenever and do whatever they want with the two and a half billion dollars, but it's nice to have, isn't it? It's nice to have. It's a pretty strong asset base. Now, reserves in context. Okay, Rutgers has strong reserves. The there's the 818 million dollars of unrestricted reserves. It's not as big as and what's called an exceptional rating, which would be up here or an excellent rating, which would be up here, but still Rutgers' reserves for every year from 14 to 21 is between the level, what's called very good and between a BAA and between an A and an AA. Which is nice. It's nice to be there. This is a good place to be. And you can see the increase from 20 to 21. That's the one and a half billion dollars, but there's the eight, the yellow is what I really like to focus on 818 million unrestricted reserves. They've got four and a half, almost four and a half months of expenses sitting in reserve. That's what this is telling me. Well, that's a good level. The four and a half months is a good level. It puts you here. To get a triple A rating, you need like eight, nine months, somewhere between six and nine months. Six months gets you about here, eight, nine months gets you up here. Those are way higher, you know, a place like mine where I teach at Eastern Michigan, we are in that we're down here. It doesn't mean we're broke, but it means we're not nearly destroying our bond ratings on the only strongly workers. Obviously, very different places, but still, this is a very solid level of reserves is the bottom line. So the bond rating itself, I'm not going to get into the details of how Moody's does the rating. I do want to talk about what Moody says are the strengths and weaknesses. So I took these words from the bond rating itself. Yeah, summarize them, but these are this comes right from the bond rating that came out in, you can see the top of the screen on page 23 here, came out in July. So August, September, two months and five days ago, that's pretty real. That's as recent as you're going to get with a bond rating. So it's a pretty recent bond rating. It incorporates the bond rating incorporates the 2021 financial statements, which are a basis of the analysis so far. Obviously, we're going to look at some other metrics, but very funny. So, stretch, large scale of operations, critical role in the New Jersey educational framework as a flagship and land grant. University leadership continues successfully plan. They get to talk to Moody's and tell them how great they are. And extra complex strategic initiatives, including affiliation with the health system and growing research profile, which is very good, of course. This will increase already sizable financial reserves. So me telling you one thing, they, there's, there's no doubt in in any stretch of the imagination that the reserves are very large and strong. That doesn't mean they should go out and spend every penny of them. However, it does indicate that in difficult times, they have reserves to tap into. And it also begs the question, and it's something we can discuss in the Q and A. Do they really need all these reserves? Do they really need 800 million dollars of unrestricted reserves sitting around? We could talk about that. So, and there has been some capital investment that's buildings without that much growth, somewhat thin operating performance. That was the A level for that EBITDA ratio. That's what the first one means. There's some issue as to how flexible the reserves are. But I'm not so sure that's a really big issue. Pressured state funding means, well, the state of New Jersey is not exactly that forgiving, that that giving when it comes to state appropriation and the state's got some pension issues. And this, the administration always complains about buildings that have to be taken care of. So in general, these are good things. The rating is good. The strength is solid. And this is in their own words. So what I have here, I'm taking Rutgers' own words to summarize what how things went in 2021. University financial position improved and increased in that position. That means revenues bigger than expenses of over half a billion dollars. Operating revenues decreased but offset by increases in other revenues. COVID grants and other revenues and health and health center. Operating expenses decreased quite a bit. And again, COVID relief funds helped. Tuition revenue is pretty solid. The enrollment of unbelievably high 70,000 students. And the state appropriation increased as a result of state lifting and spending freezes resulted in a $36 million increase from fiscal 20 and we'll see 22 and 23 looking 23 especially looking much better. So again, this is their own words. So between Moody's words and their own words, I think the overall picture again, cash flows, reserves. Those are the keys to me to show that they have the resources. And a lot of what we're going to do for the rest is show are they spending it the right way. But before we get there, I want to take a dive into enrollment. It's such a big revenue source, such a source of contention that I want you guys to know everything that they know. Not that you don't know this implicitly, but now I'm going to show it to you explicitly. So this is the whole case. This is everyone. We can start big picture and then knock it down. So going back to 16 O I R A P is the Office of Institutional Research and Planning at Rutgers, which is where I'm getting this data from. So there's a lot of different sources that you can get enrollment data from, some common data set. iPads, which is the federal government as well. But I in working with Rutgers all these time, I believe that the people at this office, who I assume have a lot of union members working there, do know what they're doing and have, and I trust the data that I see there. And it does match the data sources that I've looked at in other, you know, places. So I know there's a lot of other ways you can get the enrollment data, but I believe the the link I put on this page is the best way to get enrollment data. The fall 22 data is not there yet. But I think it's going to be there in about three weeks. We're going to see fall 22 and that will be fiscal 23. And I'm not leaving the earth and we could dig into all this stuff and show you, it won't be that hard for me to update these, these next couple of slides for fall 22. So enrollment did go down from 20 to 21, a little bit, 293 students, 0.4% and a 1.7% decline. But the level of enrollment at 22 is still higher than it was pre pandemic. Which is pretty solid. So that's the big picture. By campus, so breaking it down, Camden, Newark, New Brunswick and RBHS. If you use iPads or the common data set, they do not break down the campuses this way. New Brunswick, these two are combined in iPads. These two New Brunswick campuses are combined in iPads, which I think doesn't quite let us tell the full story is another reason why I use the office institutional research and planning data for my enrollment analysis, not iPads or some of the bond data that they put out and so the other data, I think this is the best source. So you can see what I'm having here in 22, Camden is 9% of everything, Newark 17, New Brunswick 63, fairly steady. These percentages are fairly steady over time and RBHS 10% of the whole thing. And now the changes by campus. So this is the annual change year by year. One, two, three, four, five, six years. You can see Camden and Newark had declines from 20 to 21 and 21 to 22. Patrick sent me something the other day that really talked about why students are having so much trouble enrolling. That's a major factor in some of the declines we've seen in these two at these two campuses at Camden and Newark. So that's something that I think we should definitely consider. New Brunswick, I have highlighted in blue because it increases, it's been increasing every year, not just, this is total New Brunswick. We'll break it down undergrad, grad. But that's what we see now, which is pretty impressive. So but still, these numbers here for Camden and Newark, and I think it feeds, someone mentioned Camden and we can't get certain things. I think this is my way to address, if I'm allowed, just give me, give me just 30 seconds to address what I heard from one of the presidents beforehand referring to Camden. My view is that Rutgers is one place. It's one university. And it's not like everything is not affecting the other places. It's not like people, students don't take classes. I mean, obviously they take classes mostly on one campus, but there are alternatives, as you know. And the changes in enrollment are sometimes driven by lack of resources administration is putting into these campuses and the way the administration is marketing these programs. That has something to do with it. My view is Rutgers has the resources overall, as we've seen with the reserves and the cash flows. And to say that, well, Camden has to sit on its own and Newark is by itself and New Brunswick's by itself. As I said, as I said before, many times, don't let them silo you into Camden, Newark, New Brunswick, or Union one versus Union two versus Union three. That's what they want to do. The strength of Rutgers, the strength of the groups I'm speaking to are that you all see yourselves as one. And the administration wants to show you, wants to show you as separate. Camden is by itself. Newark is by itself, but that's really not the way this is. Rutgers is one university. One very large university, but it's one university. So there are some reasons for these things. And Patrick, you know, the piece Patrick sent me was really amazing in terms of students not being able to get classes. I read it and I was like, wow. It was pretty stark and many of you on those campuses probably know those stories. So what I broke it up here is the long term, I broke it up into two sub-periods, 16 to 19, 19 to 22, and then the six-year sub-period. And so this is all the camp, this is by campus. And the black is everything. So the orange is health is RBHS. The red is New Brunswick, white is Newark and the bluish is Camden. I didn't choose those colors for any particular reason, but they're different from each other. That's honest with you. I'm using black as total because it kind of meshes everything into one. Other than that, I don't really have any rhyme or reason for the colors. So you can see from 16 to 19, other than the health, everything went up. 19 to 22, there's new Camden and Newark right there. But overall, over the six-year period, Camden and Newark are still up.
Howard, Howard, this is Jim Brown in Camden. Can I jump? Sorry to interrupt you. I just wanted to ask a question. The one thing those numbers aren't fully capturing is that the, the, the Camden campus almost doubled prior to 2016 because of the bridging the gap program, which allowed people, you know, with from lower income families to enroll without having to pay full tuition, right? So, so I just want to point that out that like pre 2016, the campus almost doubled. uh, without having to pay full tuition, right? So, so I just wanna point that out, that like pre-two thousand sixteen, the campus almost doubled. Um, and, and, and to go back to the question of like head counts, you know, if, if you take just raw numbers and who's on campus, that's one thing. But if you're, but when you're talking about Camden and, and sometimes Newark as well, not all those folks are paying, paying the same amount of money because of programs like bridging the gap, which is supposed to extend access to first generation students, et cetera. So I just wanna point that out.
No, that, that's, that, that, those are important points. Let, let me say this about the point that you just made. And when you look, I, I really believe that in, that administrations and in negotiations, they look at this data where my cursor is right here and make statements like, we can't afford, we can't, you're not gonna get a new hire because of, and they point to these numbers. And again, like you said, they need to be seen in the context of, let's go back in time. And what, who are these people who are actually there, and what is really being done to promote? And what are the things that are being done? And also, if you take a longer term view, you really get a very different story. So these are all things that uh need to be considered, but I, there's no doubt that this is being, that the administration, where my cursor is, is using this, and I'm sure you guys feel this. And so I'm just trying to, and what we just heard was some ways to combat it. Now, what I have here is breaking it down by campus, by level, just undergrad, grad. So undergrad enrollment is down from nineteen to twenty-two, except for New Brunswick. So I'm gonna focus the middle cut, the middle panel, nineteen to twenty-two, the other, the other three reds. And the one black is New Brunswick, that's what I'm meaning by that first one. Grad enrollment is up in both sub-periods, four fifty-nine, the total grad enrollment is up due to both in the last sub-period, Camden and New Brunswick. So it's a more complicated story than what we see. But in general, as Moody's pointed out, to me, the enrollment story is still a pretty good one. It's a huge campus to go up from sixty-seven thousand to almost now seventy thousand is simply amazing to even do that. This graph on thirty-one looks at the three, the two sub-periods, total undergrad. So the red undergrad up from sixteen to nineteen, down from nineteen to twenty-two, but up overall in this, in the, in the entire six-year period. White is grad enrollment being up in all, in both sub-periods, and black is a total enrollment being up a lot in the first sub-period, down in six, nineteen to twenty-two, but are still overall increasing. So this is it by campus. And you could see the greenish is the long sub-period. So to go with the point that was just made, if you, I think the point was made, if you took this back to fourteen, this green would start moving up here, is I think the point that was, I think that's the point that was being made. Is that accurate? Yes, I hope, I'm hoping I'm getting that right. Jim, yes, okay, well, I think it is. So, and Newark and New Brunswick still increasing over the long sub-period. Now, I also have enrollment by residency, and this would surprise me a little bit because it's many of the places I've been to. It's international enrollment that's driven some recent declines. Well, if I look at international enrollment in total, over the six-year period, it's up. It did go down from nineteen to twenty-two. But still, five hundred ninety-eight students isn't a huge amount of students. It's less than a ten percent decline over the time period. Undergrad international enrollment, down just a little bit. Uh, grad enrollment, down a lot more. But surprisingly, what's driving the enrollment decline from nineteen to twenty-two is more New Jersey undergraduates. So in-state undergraduate enrollment is driving more of everything than anything going on internationally in other states. So I thought that was interesting. And this graph on thirty-four looks at the breakdown by residency, undergrad is seven eighths from the state of New Jersey. Grad is two-thirds from New Jersey. So, and then together, it's about four fifths. So, there you go. And this is just a picture of that, and this surprised me right here. The other US states, obviously, New York's a lot of this. Pennsylvania as well, given the geography. And, but you can see the New Jersey decline right there. Pretty surprising to me that from nineteen to twenty-two, there's a big decline in New Jersey undergraduates, but not an increase in our state students. And a small decline, not a small, but a decent decline in international students. But still, over the six-year period, total enrollment's up a couple thousand students, which is very impressive. All right, now I broke it down. Lastly, by college, by campus. So these are different campuses at Camden. And I'm not doing this to pit one college against each other. This is more for you guys to know, I don't know what's going on on these campuses in terms of these different colleges. You who work on these campuses know this. I don't know what you do with this. To me, I give you this data so you can say, okay, at Camden, which of the college, you know, it looks like business and arts and sciences are driving more of the decline, and law and nursing and grad school doing well. But that doesn't really mean they're better or run better. It just means enrollment's changing in that way over this. And for these, for the college day, I only go back to eighteen, because I didn't, I didn't have data at the college level before eighteen on OAR, on the Office of Institutional Research and Planning website. So this is what I had, and still it's pretty, you know, going back, got five years of data, it's a pretty healthy data source. So that's going on at Camden. Newark, I'm highlighting in yellow the campuses, the colleges at Newark that led to the decline in this twenty to twenty-two sub-period for Newark. And again, I'm not making any statements. As someone who has a law degree, I was happy to see lawyers go, lawyers doing well on all the campuses, both Camden and Newark. It's great. And New Brunswick, these are all the different campuses, and these are the changes at New Brunswick. By far, obviously, New Brunswick is by far the largest campus, and a big increase in business. Decline in arts and sciences, a big increase in grad studies in this two-year period. But overall, both sub-periods, significant increases. This may not look like, but when you increase enrollment by one point four percent, when you've got forty thousand plus students, it's hard to increase enrollment more than that. It, it, there's just no place to put everybody also. I mean, this, I've been there, I've, I've, I've been to New Brunswick, it's not exactly Iowa. I can tell you that. There's some, you guys are not exactly, everyone's not, everyone doesn't have their own empire to walk around in. I mean, it's kinda tight there. It can be, even though it's a big campus, it's still kinda tight. So to increase enrollment by more than these percentages is just not something that happens, given the size. And lastly, uh, nothing but increases in RBHS. Okay, tuition and fee price, uh, they're basically the same in all the campuses. There's an increase in the year we're currently in now of two point nine percent, and just let me show you the picture here. The two point nine percent increase in the current year, twenty-two to twenty-three, matches what we saw from nineteen to twenty. And you can see that the increase isn't really changing by campus. There was decline in tuition from here to here, but it kinda got overtaken. So in general, they, they're increasing tuition two, three percent a year. That's what they do. And I'll show you how that leads to tuition revenue. Then the discount rate is how much of a break off the sticker price is there? And this twenty-four point five percent is explained here. That's the sticker price tuition. That's how much Rutgers takes home and puts in their bank account. So out of one point three billion, they took home about a billion. And that's a twenty point five percent discount rate. And the administration's gonna say the rate's higher, they tend to focus on the rates of first-year undergrads only. This is the rate for all students, grad, undergrad, all campuses. And it really hasn't, surprisingly, through the pandemic, and especially in the private sector, I'll say, in public sector, not as much, but even in the public sector, I usually see, we usually, I have seen an increase during the pandemic years, did not see that here. In fact, the discount rate actually declined. A lot of that is because there was so much aid given by the federal government, so Rutgers did not get as much aid away. All right, now, in terms of tuition revenue, it's like a stew. You, you put in it, the, the mix of grad undergrad, you put in the mix of campus, you put in the mix of the tuition and fee price, you put in the mix of enrollment, and you get a dark green bar. And the dark green bar went down from twenty to twenty-one, a lot because of the decline in tuition revenue, in the tuition price. Given what we see in twenty-one to twenty-two. Now, enrollment did go down some, but as I said, I believe that the increased intuition revenue is gonna be where my cursor is, somewhere in here. The dark green, we don't know this yet. The year ended in June, it ended a couple of months ago. The administration probably knows the answer, but they're not gonna let us know until about February or March. And by then we'll know, and I think it's gonna be in here, which is very healthy. The state appropriation, this is not the fringe part, this is just the operating part. And I used the data from the Bureau of Labor Statistics for inflation, because inflation is something we talked about, we've mentioned it briefly before I started, it's something that needs to be considered. And you can see the appropriation on a nominal basis, which is the green. It is now finally in twenty-three higher than it was, but even in twenty-two, it wasn't higher than it was in, in fourteen, on a nominal basis. On a inflation-adjusted basis, the state has not kept up. Though it has increased, we're seeing a nice increase for the fiscal year we're seeing in now on September nineteen from four thirty-four last year, that's what this, this is four thirty-four, this up here is four eighty-six. Where my cursor is, that's four eighty-six, that's four thirty-four. Because we've had so much inflation in this year, not as much of a real increase. But still, uh, it is the heftiest increase that the state has given Rutgers uh, in the last decade, which is good. So. Just to give you a sense of how much students and their families, you know, you hear about student debt. If you wanna know why student debt's a problem, look at this chart. And I can, and you know, if we go back earlier, we go back even to the beginning of the decade, basic, beginning of the century, these, these lines went the other way. It used to be more from the state than tuition and fees, revenue to the university. Eight hundred million to over one point one billion, while the state appropriation has stayed between four hundred and five hundred million the whole time. So there's more of a burden on students and their families. And if you want, I, I'm not, I know this isn't about student debt, I understand that, that, you know, this is not, that's a separate issue. But I know many of you care about the issue, I believe, I'm, I'm sure many of you do. And this is why. I mean, students have to borrow money and go to school. So. All right, summarizing two, two main revenue sources. Whoa. What happened there? You guys with me? Okay, two main revenue sources, this is really good news. Using the budget. Okay, using the budget, we had a sixty-eight million dollar increase from twenty-one to twenty-two in tuition and the state combined, and a hundred million dollar increase for twenty-three. Tuition and fee revenue is supposed to go up, the state appropriation after going down for twenty-two is supposed to go up there, so that's four thirty-four to four eighty-six. We're seeing some nice, healthy increases in the main revenue sources, and I haven't gotten to COVID, which I'm getting to now. So. Let me, let me try to explain COVID, which is a confusing way. First, there were three acts. HIRF, meaning Higher Education Emergency Relief Funds, HIRF one, two, and three. Then there was the state money, GIA, Governor's Education Emergency Relief and COVID Relief Fund, CRF. But first, focus on the Fed money first. A lot of it came in twenty, the first act, but I'm not including the yellow, does not include a single dollar that's going to students. This is totally discretionary to Rutgers, and that they're counting as income. So they're gonna get twenty-eight million dollars from HIRF one. They spent, they got and spent most of it in twenty, a little of in twenty-one, none of it in twenty-two. HIRF two, discretionary money. They got fifty-eight million. They spent only, they received and spent only five million of it in twenty-one. They're getting fifty-three million of it in the year that ended in June of twenty-two. I, I keep saying, I've said to Patrick and Sherry many times, that twenty-one was the best year ever. I think twenty-two's gonna be a better year than twenty-one. When I look at cash flows and reserves, I think twenty-two's gonna beat twenty-one because of what you're seeing on the screen here. ORP, American Rescue Plan, HIRF three. All of this money, seventy-five million dollars in discretionary money is coming to Rutgers, came to Rutgers and got spent in twenty-two. So over this three-year period, they got in non-student discretionary money, a hundred and sixty-two million dollars, and another seventy-nine million from the state. The admin's gonna say, the upper admin's gonna say, one time, can't consider it, doesn't matter. Firstly, it wasn't exactly one time, it came over three years, so that's not one time. Secondly, it mattered a lot, it helped alleviate the declines, some enrollment decline, but mostly the auxiliary revenue decline. And thirdly, it was a boom. The amount of money that came in was much larger than anything they lost in terms of revenue losses. So, yes, twenty-three may not have any more HIRF money. But it sure helps to have that money in the bank as you go forward.
Uh, Howard, can, can I ask you something also about this? Uh, this one goes on. The, the, uh, you only account there for the institutional money in that yellow bar, but there was enormous amount of obviously money that passed through the university that then went to the students in grants from the federal government, you know, uh, and my question is, is there any way to tell, you mentioned that there was a, uh, it was either flat or lower, the university's own scholarship and grant money during this period? Is it any, is there any way to measure how the university was able to, in essence, get the feds to replace a portion of what they would normally give in grants, and therefore keep more money, uh, uh, through this process of the pandemic?
I, I think the answer is, I can't trace it for you exactly, but your intuition, it's, has to be correct. It has to be the case that some of the cash increase we've seen is because they got all this money. They gave, they used less of their own money or kept it flat. Well, where do you think the money went? It had to go somewhere. I think your point is the money had to go somewhere, and it basically just went into their, you know, went into their bank account. Yeah, they gave a lot of it to students, but they were giving money to students. They replaced, they basically kept that money flat or down a little bit and use this other money to help students get to, get through school. And if I could take it one step further than you did, my view is that the, the extra financial resources given to students should, should, bear with me now, help these students get through faster. Because it means a, on average, a student getting more financial support should have to work less, should feel better about themselves and perform better in classes, be more likely to succeed and graduate. The graduation rates are pretty strong at Rutgers, but they're still, they're in the seventies, when I say seventy-two, seventy-three, seventy-four percent, things of that nature. And those are good graduation rates compared to where I work, where it's thirty-eight percent. But not good when you compare it to the other Big Ten universities where the graduation rates are in the mid-eighties. And my view is that that student money, not only helping them basically putting in their pockets uh, or are using it to help students, but it's gonna, it's gonna be reflected in higher tuition revenue going forward. So, and I'm, so I'm not arguing that we shouldn't have got it, or shouldn't have spent it, but now, the final answer to your question, when the twenty-two audited statements come out, the, I'm gonna learn a little bit more about all of this. I'm gonna be able to give you more of a, okay, here's the financial aid that got spent. Here's the financial aid that came from HIRF one, two, and three. And so if you guys will bear with me, when HIRF is done, and I see the notes to the financials where, where I got most of this from, you're gonna, we're gonna be able to tell a more robust story. But I think my intuition, to go along with the question, it's gonna be even better. Things are gonna be even better for Rutgers financially. And look at the state support, I mean, that's a lot of state support from, you know, Governor Murphy didn't personally give you the money, but from, from the governor's office. I, I live in Michigan, we have a Democratic governor, but we don't have a Democratic legislature. We got basically nothing from the state. The public universities in our state got basically nothing in what you see here in blue. So that's not, that's not nothing. Seventy-nine million is a lot of money. Over, okay, over two years, but still, a lot of money.
Howard, if I could stop you there for just one second, or pause for one second, Juan, thank you for that question. There's also, uh, uh, if you don't mind, if we could pause here, there's a couple of questions in the chat that are, I think, related. So Donna, I don't know if you wanna unmute and just go ahead and ask, or I can ask your question from the chat, Donna, merch? So Donna's question is, basically, how do we, how will we be able to trace how much money actually went to students directly? Because we're hearing lots of anecdotal evidence that students did not get the money that they requested.
Okay, so that, yeah.
Is that, is that partially answered by what you just said? Like, are we waiting?
Sort of, but let me, let me, let me address it more fully. Let, let me address the question more fully. What we know is what Rutgers told us in their audit- what Rutgers told us in their audit of statements about how much money went to students. The twenty-seven-one, the twenty-seven-one, and the seventy-four-two. I believe that in the twenty-two audit of statements, we're going to get a fuller accounting of the financial aid money and how, what they claim went to students, how it actually flowed through. This money going to students, there's, because it's not income to the university, I don't know how much of this got spent here. I don't know of this money, how much got spent here, and how much got spent here, and how much got spent here. We're going to get a better feel for this when we get all the grant money and all the grant data from iPads. And I think by the end of twenty-two, we're going to be able to put together a much better story of, and answer the question. Did they really give twenty-seven million, twenty-seven million, and seventy-four million to students in grant? Did that actually happen? And can we see that in either the audit of statements or in the iPad's grant data? And so it's hard to, for me to answer it now because they shifted so much of that data to the, so much of those funds for the university to the future, I think they shifted a lot of the grant money forward as well. And it's just hard to tell from what we see here, but the questions, the two questions that are asked are obviously incredibly important. Rutgers' answer is going to be, we gave it all to students, it's one time, let's forget this money and move on. I'm not ready to do that, and you shouldn't be ready to do that either. Listen, I'm not leaving the earth. And we're going to do more than what you see here. What you see here is my best effort based on the information I had to reconcile what's going on. The story is not done yet. And, go ahead.
Can I ask just a quick question about that? I feel a little dense asking this, but I want to make sure I understand what this graph is. This table is the amount of HIRF money received. Yes, or it's amount of money spent, it's received?
Good, I, I wasn't as clear as it, let me be clearer, I was not as, as you say it, I was not, okay. The word received means they've gotten it in cash. And did they spend it? It's not going to count, pardon my language here, because your question is right on point. They're not going to count it as quote-unquote income until it's actually received. So how it is the one-twenty-nine in unrestricted reserves, I think some of it is yes, to go along. So if could I just be an accountant for a second? I know this isn't an accounting class, but you just asked a question, it's kind of an accounting question. So they receive the cash. And it goes in their cash account.
So this is not spent, I just want to make that clear.
It's not spent. It's not spent.
Just what we received from her.
We will know if it is spent if, pardon my capitalization, if Rutgers claims it as income. So they're spending, so the fact that they spent it means we're not going to count it as income until we actually spend it on stuff. As opposed to it just sitting there, that's what they're saying, that's what this graph is saying. So the, the money that they, let's take the art money, this is cleaner. They got seventy-five million dollars from the federal government, they haven't spent a penny of it. They physically have it. But they're not counting it as income because they're saying they have not who knows, you know, they have not, whatever they've done with it, they haven't done anything with it. And they use an account, pardon my, called Ener and Revenue. Ener and Revenue means you got the cash, but have not done the work yet to count it as income. It's like collecting tuition revenue in July. Sorry, in July, for a student who will begin classes in September. So when you collect that tuition money in July, you don't count it as income until the student actually goes to class in September. That's what happened here, they collected the money, but they haven't really done it with the discretionary money to students. I'm not so sure they've directly given it to students or taken it off their bills, so to speak. So that's the best way I could explain it, and you guys are all asking the right questions. I think they definitely have a lot more money that they're going to spend. Yes, they, yeah, they, they definitely have it as reserves is the way I look at it, but they're going to spend it on I'm not so sure what. They're going to say they're going to spend it on everything, they're not going to give you a specifics, but the bottom line is, it gives them, this money gives them more financial freedom and flexibility than they had before, because they have more money to spend on cutting the grass, faculty salaries, staff salaries, staff benefits, et cetera. Health center, whatever you want to call it. So. All right, now, what I did here is I used the actual websites from the federal government, that's what these sites are, as to how much money each institution was going to get. And according to what I, using those sites, and those estimates, Rutgers was supposed to get one fifty-seven, they actually got one sixty-two. They do get a couple million dollars, Rutgers being an MSI, which is a minority ser- minority-serving institution, and Becky pointed out last time that at the time of these acts, only Newark was considered a minority-serving institution, but since that time, that has now changed. So. I don't, you know, the, the point in the chat is, is the unspent money being hoarded or spent on students. It's just hard, I'm not going to be able to give you a definitive answer until I get twenty-two, and I get the iPad data from twenty-two. And I have, then, by then, everything will have been received and spent, and then I'll be able to tell you a little bit of a better story. But they're certainly better off from all this money. So sorry for all the questions there. All right, let me, let me finish up. Auxiliary. They're going to point to the green line as a big problem. The auxiliary revenues going down during the pandemic, no one went to our games. We'll get into athletics at the end, but their expenses also went down. They've always been running deficits in auxiliaries. Driven by athletics, they basically make a big profit on housing and dining and don't do as well in athletics, that's really what this is about. Health revenues. I don't know what to say about this other than, oh my. Just leave it at that. Now, let's talk about where the money's going. Okay. This is using the audit of statements, operating expenses of over four billion dollars. Two-thirds of it goes to people, salaries and benefits. Five years ago, seventy-two percent went to people. They're going to say a lot of this increase was granted, now, the grant aid to students, you could see this increase is a lot smaller than the money they got from the feds. So that's the question that was originally asked. Where is, you know, if they got a hundred and something million, which they did, where is it? It's not here, right? I think that's the point, it's not here. Where is it, I think, is the question that was addressed, the first question that came out. I think it was Juan's question, if I got his name right. I think Juan is, pardon my language, Juan, but you're saying WTF with, you know, this, I think that's what you're saying, and I you're right, I see it. Well, I want to see what twenty-two looks like. Before I before I'm for sure, knowing that it wasn't spent the right way. But still, this is the money going to people, and this is the way, this is the two thousand twenty-one, what's called natural expense distribution. Fifty-one percent salaries, fifty-one and sixteen is sixty-seven. And that's this sixty-seven seventy, this sixty-seven seven here. Okay, I'll do the math in the chat, is I'll go to the next page, just to make sure you get something that you feel good about math-wise. Fifty-one point six percent plus sixteen, one percent. That's that. The second way we do this, they use a category in their in their internal documents called general administration, which includes, I believe, some union people. I believe there's union people included in here. Though most, most of the dollars are not union members. But there are, you know, we have the, we have the administrative union, I think most of the dollars are for people at the upper levels. And what we see in this graph, we get to this graph here, is that general administration is up twelve percent over seventeen to twenty-one. Instruction down, academic support down, plant down, auxiliary down the most because of the reduction in expenses, but research up the most than general administration in that regard. So that's one way of looking at it. In looking at, now we start getting into the next couple of minutes, I promise, I'm only got about ten minutes to go and I'll be done. Is the salaries going to the people in the different campuses? And unlike, and again, I'm using the budget here. I'm not using iPads, I'm not using institutional research and planning, I'm not using the audit of statements, I'm using the Rutgers budget. And this amount to central administration is around three twenty-four to three sixty-three, over this time period. The percentage of total salaries going to the people, it's what they're calling, what they're calling central, keeps going up. The percentages on the campuses is fairly flat. And it's not much. However, from twenty to twenty-three, just before the pandemic, the twenty was a budget made before the pandemic. Through the current budget we're operating under now, there's been a bigger increase in central administration salaries than Camden, RBHS, Newark, New Brunswick, and then all the campuses combined. So that's the first part of the admin blue piece. Now we really get into it. So here, I'm using the institutional research and planning data for a number of people. Management, as I said before, I do not believe includes anyone in the administrative bargaining unit. It is all them, it's all admin. And these are different, the different categories of employment that institutional research and planning uses, mostly what iPads uses, iPad is federal government. It's the federal government's categories. And you could just look at, you could just eyeball the change from eighteen to twenty-two. Management's up, most of the other categories are down. You could see there's a decrease of sixty in total staff employees, not, there's not faculty at all, it's just staff. An increase in management employees in Camden. At Newark, management down to, everybody else down a lot more over this five-year period. At New Brunswick, the number of managers up the total number of staff by ten, from two twenty-four to two thirty-four. The number of total staff members down over three hundred people at New Brunswick. And RBHS is up for everybody, but more for management, as I'll show you. This graph here just shows you by campus. From eighteen to twenty-two, a decline of sixty people at Camden, eighty-six at Newark, three twenty-seven in New Brunswick, an increase in RBHS, total staff decline, where an increase in total enrollment over this time period. But here's where it really gets, this is where, this is the slide. Let's look at Camden. Oh, from eighteen to twenty-two, two more managers were hired, decline in all other staff of sixty-two. A thirteen percent increase in management, whereas a ten point four percent decrease in all other staff. Newark, this green bar down five point four percent. This green bar down eight-seven, so a much larger decline, a decline in both management and staff, and a bigger decline in staff. New Brunswick, an increase in management of four and a half percent, which is this pink bar. A decrease in all other staff of four point six percent at New Brunswick. RBHS, an increase in management of nine percent, and a decrease, an increase in staff of four. For everybody combined, an increase of fifteen managers versus a decrease of two hundred and fifty-six other staff, or a four and a half percent increase in management and a one point nine percent decrease in all other staff employees. And I think this is pretty damning to me. This is their own data, I didn't make any of this data up, all I did was collate it and report it, it's all I did. And I don't know how you guys feel about this. I don't know if this is surprising to you or not surprising to you. But this is what we see. The category of archivists, curators, museum technicians, librarians, library technicians, as I mentioned, like before, my, my wife's mother was librarian for many years and a big part of our family. And to see these declines in library employees, librarians, and library technicians. I don't know, I don't get it. And let's talk about dollars. So Camden, Newark, New Brunswick, this is through iPads. The average salary of managers went from two-ten to two-thirty-nine. Newark, two-oh-two to two-twenty, New Brunswick, two-oh-eight to two-twenty-five. So you see, the managers are paid roughly this two hundred K plus on all the campuses. There's not much difference in what the upper level managers are paid. This tells me why there's not, there's no union members in here, I'm sorry. I don't think the union people in the administration are getting these kind of salaries, they're just not, I know that for a fact. And this is adding everybody together. And then when I look at the dollar increase, so stay with me here. Over this time, all the campuses, management salaries went from two-oh-seven to two-twenty-six, an increase of eighteen thousand dollars. Every other staff member from eighteen to twenty-one saw their increase of fifty-five hundred. Similar percentage was, but not close dollar was. So all the other staff members on all the campuses saw an increase of fifty-five hundred over the four-year period, managers saw an increase of eighteen thousand five hundred dollars. So there's an increase, so the change in the number and the average pay to these people is going, so there's what the change has been, increase in management, decrease in all of the staff. And the dollar changes in average salary have been much higher for management than for all of the staff. You guys with me on this? Or you're just really pissed off, and you don't want to say anything? Jimmy, you upset about this? You just, you look not happy, or you just?
I'm not happy, but I appreciate the information. Yeah, I mean, you're, you're doing everything you're supposed to be doing, I guess, is what I was.
Well, it doesn't, I, I don't want to make you guys upset, I just want, but I didn't search for the data, Jim, I just, so this is the average salaries for all the campuses, the management faculty, management employees, and then all the other staff employees. Faculty, so here's, we have, I know we have part-time unions here, so here's the part-time. Now, what struck me about the part-time faculty, I, this included all instructors, so it could include people who will maybe not be teaching classes, but are called instructional. Which is why the number may be bigger than what Brian gave us earlier. What struck me in this data was as follows. The decline in part-time faculty, thirty-four ninety-eight down to thirty-two-five, that, this is a security issue, right here is a security issue. You don't know if you're going to have a job from year to year. So to me, and I can't give you guys no better than me, how to negotiate contracts. But there's got to be a lack of security and just knowing that you could have your job from year to year, that's got to be pervasive in the, in the PTL, in the PTL group. I, I can't speak for that, but that's what the numbers are telling me as, as an analyst. And that's what I see here, when I see that kind of when the enrollment didn't go down by much. And this is the big change in part-time lecturers, in part-time faculty over this period. Full-time faculty, the story's a little different, the story is simple. A decline in the number of tenure and tenure-track faculty and an increase in the number of non-tenure-track faculty. Fifty-two in tenure, decline of fifty-two in tenure-track, and increase of two forty-six in non-tenure over this time period. And there's the graph. And last thing, let's go Scarlet Knights. Okay, the, the administration is going to tell, you guys, and there's, we've seen this story, I, just, let me go to the end here, I'll just, I've seen these stories about the spending on Broadway tickets and DoorDash, et cetera. And the hundred million dollars for the practice facility, all of that, I've seen all of it. And the deficit of seventy-three million was in one of the stories. The administration's going to say the reason there was such a big deficit was because of the pandemic. The response to that is simple. Go back to before you went to the Big Ten. And then after you went to the Big Ten. Has it been any better ever? Yeah, it was a little worse in twenty-one, but no, it just hasn't worked. The direct revenues are not enough to cover the athletic expenses. They're just not even close. Take away twenty-one, which was the year that got reported in January. In January, I think, third week of January of twenty-three, we're going to get the twenty-two data. And I can't wait to get it, and we'll have a lot of fun with it and see where the deficit was. My prediction is it's going to be somewhere in here in the forty, fifty million dollar range. And the reason is, there's not, now, the ticket sale, okay, ticket sales went from eight million down to fourteen thousand. The cardboard didn't obviously count as tickets. But I went back all the way to two thousand and five. Has Rutgers ever really sold a lot of tickets to their basketball and football games? I mean, I understand that people went to the basketball games, it was exciting last year, and you know, the last two years, Rutgers has been kind of middle of the Big Ten, and you got Siano back to coach football, and I mean, I understand that people went to the basketball games. It was exciting last year and, you know, the last two years, Rutgers has been kind of middle of the Big Ten and you got Siano back to coach football and you're winning some games and all that. It's not translating dollar wise. The point is, these student fees and money coming from the core of the university. Is needed to prop up athletics. Because these revenue sources aren't enough. Even if I add eight, ten million dollars here, it's not enough. The move to the Big Ten, given the expenses that are going to be required to keep up. The revenues are just not going to be there in terms of campus specific ticket sales and contributions. It's never going to be there. These increases in revenue from TV are not going to be enough to cover these ever. It's never going to happen. I'm sorry to tell you this. It's not going to happen. And I love sports and watch the Big Ten every week. Two thousand and sixty nine, you know, Sherry, maybe, maybe. But I, I'm not seeing it. How is this gonna, how is this gonna reverse itself? I don't, I mean, I just don't see how it reverses itself. So. These are the individual athletic expenses, the coaching staff. This isn't going to, it, the coaching staff doubled in five years. In order to keep up, to, to keep up in the Big Ten and pay your coaches to come here, you're going to keep doubling coaching staff expenses every five, ten years. That's just going to keep happening. It's not going to change. You're not going to double revenues. Even with UCLA and USC in the Big Ten. And yes, these, this is the rights fees. This is the, this is, okay, now you're in the Big Ten. This increase is not nearly enough to deal with these big increases in expenses that you feel in the Big Ten and the ticket sales are basically nothing. And these are the subsidies. This is the subsidy in twenty one. This is the money coming from the students and the right core of the university to prop things up. It's just not there. It's maybe a little better than it was here, but these are. Thirty million, twenty nine, twenty nine, twenty eight, no, it's just not going to get better. The students pay for this no matter what. So it's not good. And in the Big Ten, we don't have twenty one data yet. We will. USA Today, and I am a subscriber, so I will get this data. I do subscribe to USA Today just for these purposes. When I get to twenty one data, I think Rutgers subsidy will be higher. And these will be lower. I mean, you got Michigan, they got no subsidies at all because they are self-supporting, obviously. How do you compete with these? I mean, I know you guys compete on the field some. I've seen the games. You know, Ron Harper Jr., terrific, hit a couple of nice shots. I, I, I watched, and I'm a big fan. Love it. All my wife went to Michigan State, loved the Big Ten and all that, but it's just not the. It's not going to work financially. All right, fifteen minutes early. Much better than last time. I took some questions ready, so. Patrick, I hope that was better in terms of timing.
Thank you, Howard. Um, if you want to turn off your, uh, screen share, we can get back to everybody, uh, in the grid here and open things up a little bit. I know some folks got to ask questions already. But, um, I wanted to open it up to see if anybody else had questions either in the chat or just feel free to raise your hand and we can, you can unmute and, and ask a question.
You guys want me to put something, Ryan?
Put the slides back up if you like. I just want to be able to see everybody.
Yeah, but I, yeah, it's up to you. If you guys want me to put something else up, just let me know what you want me to put up, and I will if I am, as I address the questions. Athletics, I went through kind of quickly. Is there anything in athletics that someone wants, Ryan or Brian, that you guys want to see?
Howard, I was just pointing to the, to Ryan, the slide on Rutgers subsidy of athletics, that it's about fifty percent of the other Big Ten schools combined.
Yeah, it's, yeah, so let me, let me show you that.
Staggering, staggering.
And I, and, and I think if, if I may. I think when we get twenty one's data, which will come out within a month. And you guys got to stay in contact with me. You know how to find me. Don't you guys want to know what this is for twenty one? I think it's going to be. I think the disparity is going to be worse. I, I do. There was some attendance at basketball this year. I, I did see the games at the rack, I, but I don't think that many people are paying that much to go to those games. I'm, I'm sorry to say. Maybe I'm wrong. You guys tell me if I'm wrong, but I don't think that's happening. They're not paying, people aren't paying a hundred bucks a ticket to go to the game there, are they? I don't think they are. You guys tell me if they're paying a lot of money, if they paid, if all of a sudden tickets went for a hundred dollars a ticket to go, to go to a Rutgers basketball game this year, last year. I don't think that's happening.
But they did give the coach a six-figure raise.
Yeah, you know, the only I'll say in defense of the coaches raises, which I'm not, I don't think should happen. The, the reason Rutgers has to pay these coaches and give them the raises, if they're in the same conference with Tom Izzo in basketball and Jim Harbaugh in football. Well. In order to get, in order, you know, they get, they just think they have to. Or else they, or else they'll, they'll go all in twelve. That's their answer.
But Howard, Howard, it's a great question in the chat that I want to, uh.
Go ahead.
Say out loud, which is, you know, if you, if you remove athletics from the budget, like what does the bond rating look like? Is, I mean, if that's a possible, like if you could do that.
That's a good question. Let me, let me address it. Because it happens here all the time. The administration will say that you can't just do that, that Rutgers being in the Big Ten leads to increased enrollment and increased donations. Now. I don't believe it does to a great extent. My feeling, and you guys tell me, most students go to Rutgers, not because Rutgers is playing Michigan State this, you know, this week and Ohio State next week. Most students go to Rutgers because of the education that is being delivered by all of you, uh, in, on all your different capacities. However, you can say there's got to be some increase. In enrollment and, uh, applications and in donations because of athletics. I don't think it's very large. Having said that, if I can continue with this, with it, with that analogy. I do believe at least two thirds to three quarters of this subsidy would disappear. And I think the reserves, I do think the bond rate, my view is the bond rating would go up one tick. If Rutgers was more self-supporting athletics and possibly two ticks. Ohio State is AA one. Michigan is triple A. I do think Rutgers could go up one tick if athletics was not in a spot where they had to subsidize twenty, thirty, forty, fifty million dollars a year. I do believe that, even with the increase in visibility that, uh, Rutgers gets. I mean, I watch SNY every night because I'm a Met fan and they have the coach of Rutgers on like once every three months. Does that really do anything? I mean, does that really increase enrollment and donations? I, I, I'm not convinced that it does. But the administration will use the front porch and window argument all of them. There's very little merit to it in my estimation.
Jim, could I follow up on that just while we're on the subject? I, I see Aaron wrote something in the chat that's related.
Yeah, and then Brian after you. I think Ryan has his hand up, so go ahead, Brian.
Go ahead, Ryan. Go first, please.
Yeah, I had a question about, it was one of your, um, earlier slides where you were talking about, um, the amount of money schools had in reserves and, you know, how much month of, uh, how many months? Money they have left over and you said, you know, it's, it's much better than, um, your institution, but that they're not comparable. I'm curious. How do, how do they compare to peer institutions that, you know, have similar budgets and whatnot? Just in case they try to say something like, oh, that's, you know?
It's, it's a good, let me, let me get to the slides. It's, let me get to what you're talking about. So you're talking about this slide here. And I'd say most of the Big Ten. Is up, up here. I do believe that. Most of the Big Ten is in better shape than Rutgers. I hate to say it, a lot of it is because of athletics. Most of the Big Ten, look at the slide we just looked at. Purdue, IU, Iowa, they don't have the drag that Rutgers has. Rutgers bond rating is AA three. Most of the Big Ten is AA one, AA two, and there are some at AA three.
So they have an argument, but it's self-inflicted.
And there's also, you know, there's level and comparison. The level is still high. AA three is still a strong bond rating. When compared to the group that they've chosen to put themselves in with, which is the Big Ten for athletic purposes. I mean, Rutgers is a flagship university and academically, you could argue that. Uh, Rutgers. Is a peer of some of the Big Ten schools, but if, if, let's say there was no sports. Would you come up with a Big Ten as the peer group for Rutgers if there was no sports? You guys tell me, you think you'd come up with that peer list. If there was no athletics, is that the academic peer list you'd come up with for Rutgers? I think there'd be some. More regionally based. The Sunnis would come into play. Uh, and. Financially, you guys are in a little better shape than that. Uh, that's my, you know, SUNY Buffalo, SUNY Binghamton would come into play as peers possibly, uh, if. And then obviously they don't play, they don't play Big Ten athletics, uh, UConn would come into play and you guys, I think have a stronger, much stronger research profile than UConn. And have a bond rating that's equivalent, if not better. So. I, I do think. They've chosen this field. And it makes sense at some level, but on the other hand. It doesn't make sense. And I think the spending that is necessary to keep up with the other peers in the Big Ten. I think it's just a, it's a money drain. It's not. Just think if, someone asked a question, have any, have you ever, someone asked a, 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 a question that was in the chat, if I may. Have you ever seen it be successful to reduce athletics at a university? And. The answer is generally no, though. I do believe that in the next three to five years, the conference Eastern Michigan is in and the Horizon League with Wayne State is in. I do think these schools are going to leave the Division One playing field. I do believe it. Rutgers. Is not in a good place. Because they have, you think there's a chance in hell they're going to leave. Uh, yeah, the Real Sports episode I was in, that was a school in Dallas. You know, that was, that school, that was a follow-up of the Real Sports episode I was in. That was a school in Dallas that totally got rid of sports. I just, Rutgers is not going to unilaterally disarm from the Big Ten and say we all should spend less money. That's just not going to happen. So you guys are in, I really believe the bet that was made, UAB, uh, yeah, someone, someone wrote in the chat. I, I think Rutgers has put themselves in a very bad place. You know, Sherry and Patrick, I mean, I'm not bragging out of school. You guys, you guys were with me, Sherry and Patrick, remember? When we went into, when we, when Rutgers went into the Big Ten, didn't we yell loud and clear that this was a bad idea? Sherry, are you with me on this? I mean, I believe we yelled pretty loudly and clearly this is not the thing to do. Sherry, you still there? I hope so.
We did.
Yeah, lots of yelling, yes.
I think we yelled when they went into the Big East as well.
Yeah. But, I mean.
And they had to pay ten, like, like, I don't know if it was tens of millions to get out of the Big East to go into the Big Ten.
Go into, yeah, and, but I remember us, it wasn't just us, it wasn't just the three of us. There were a lot of us in, you know, in the Rutgers leadership at the time, you know, all the unions. We thought of, that was a horrible, man, we were pretty critical. We used very stark language. I'm talking about seven, eight years ago now, but. I hate to say it, we were correct. We were completely correct. And now how do you get out? How does Rutgers get out? You can't get out of the Big Ten. And I believe the Big Ten just brought in UCLA and USC. Is that really, is that going to help you guys? How do you guys, do you think it's advantageous to have US to make? I'm sure the kids are going to love going out to California to play, but how does that help? The, how does that help Rutgers put their resources into the classroom and into the staff that support the students better? How does it do that? How does it do that? I, I don't see how it works. You guys have a different view? Do, do you guys think that UCLA and USC is a good thing for Rutgers? I, I'm not seeing that. Maybe, I'm, you know, I'm probably not, and I'm, I'm sure there's some people here disagree with that, but. That's my view.
Um, I want to make sure we get to Brian and that maybe that, that might be our last question as we get closer to wrapping up. So Brian, you want to go ahead?
Sure. I mean, Howard's got my mind racing here. I, I thought what the Big Ten was doing, Howard, just on that point was like trying to collect big media markets. Maybe Rutgers was able to convince the Big Ten that they were New York, which they're not really. And I, and you know, LA is, uh, obviously UCLA, but. I, I, I just wonder if, if you or others here could speak to the question of the, the, the bond rating focus. I, I'm leery myself of the, the bond rating focus because of course one way to keep your bond rating up is to starve labor. How do we navigate that best?
That, that's such a, I kind of dressed, I guess it's such a good question. When you look. At the actual words in the Moody's rating, some of the props that Rutgers gets is because of what you just said. They're able to keep costs down and in place. And when you focus entirely on the bond rating as the be all and end all. Rutgers will say, well, the reason we got that bond rating is because we're so good at managing the place. That's their answer. Which is, I think what you're saying in the question. The reason we got to this point is because we don't pay you guys that much. We're able to shut you guys up and not pay you what you know you're worth and what people think they're worth. The way to address it is this. Okay, maybe the bond rating is high because you think expenses are low. However. We still don't like what you're doing with the money. Look at what you're doing with admin. The first response is, why are there more admins making more money? So if you're going to tell me the bond rating is because you're so good at managing expenses, why have you decided in your management to increase the number of yourselves? Increase your own pay and not give that and decrease the number of people who actually work with the students on a daily basis? That to me is the best answer to that. Uh, but your point is still well taken. They are going to, Brian, say exactly what you said. We got the bond rating because we're so good at this. But my answer is, you're not that good at it. You're good at paying yourselves and yes, you may be keeping the unions under control. But you're doing that by not hiring people, by reducing staff, by outsourcing, by not giving raises that people deserve and by giving yourself raises that you don't deserve. So that to me, if I'm allowed to. Eh, address that, that's how I would address that issue, but it's certainly one that I, I think the devil's advocate that you played there is something you will face for sure, and I'm glad you brought it up. And I hope my response. You know, focusing on the admin costs is something that you guys all agree with. I mean, I'm telling, I'm not just saying this. I do a lot of these. The admin stuff here is bad. The increase in the number and pay of admins versus staff, that should not be happening. It just should not. And. I'm not saying it's a kind, like they intentionally screwing you guys, but they are. If I could, they are. Um, there's no way you see this data. On admin numbers and dollars unless there's some intentional move to do so. That's my view. And I'm sorry to be so blunt about it, but that's.
Howard, actually, it's really helpful because we have members come to us often saying that, that, that their general feeling is, they see announcements about associate vice chancellors getting hired on a regular basis, but they're not allowed to hire. For these faculty lines. And so we, we hear that. A lot, but having numbers to actually back it up and recent numbers, those, that twenty eighteen to twenty.
Twenty two.
Twenty two slide is an absolute killer.
Yeah, the other thing is the stat, you know, the, the staff numbers. I, I don't get why they're reducing staff so much. I don't, if you're going to reduce staff, then why are you not reducing managers? Why? Uh, you know, the staff, I mean, you guys could tell me where you think, you know, the staff, you know, I saw it in library technicians. I saw it in administrative support staff, which I'm sure is reckoned, is represented by some of the people on this call. I believe secretarial staff is down. I'm made, that's my reading of it. I don't know if that's true or not. You guys tell me if you think there's a decline in secretarial staff. It seems like there is. And why is that happening? And I'm not, yeah, it just doesn't, it doesn't ring, it doesn't ring. It just doesn't feel right and they have to address it and you guys should address it and, uh, but remember you're one, I also think. Faculty, staff. Camden, Newark, New Brunswick, you guys, you guys are always going to do best if you stand together as one. And, and don't let them silo you. Just, that's the last, just don't let them do that to you. They want to do that to you. Just don't let them do it.
Yeah, that's a helpful reminder. Well, Howard, thank you so much. Before everybody ducks off, I do want to. Um, remind you, you've probably seen it in the chat a few times from myself and Trent and others, but, uh, please do RSVP for our first action. Um, Friday at Alexander Library, there's a Google form right there in the chat to click on. Uh, it's a first opportunity to stand out there together in person that we've had in a very, very long time. It's important to get a lot of folks there.
Get out there.
If you saw things that made you angry on this call, you know, use that as motivation. Um, and I just want to say, Howard, thank you again. It's, uh, it's, it's always great to see you kind of do these deep dives. I really appreciate it.
I, I love doing it and love seeing all you guys and let's go Mets. All right, guys.